That being said, at least by my clock, it's 6:03. We will call this meeting of the Waterbury Public Schools Board of Education Building and School Facilities Committee to order. Thank you everyone for joining us. We have one agenda item tonight. I've been doing some updates on our Wendell School project with some change orders. With that, I'll turn it over to Will and Mike to kind of walk us through what we're looking at tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. You see here, we're in the control. I'm here, Will Clark, Chief Officer, Board of Ed, Michael Blank, City Finance Department is here, Tom Demoro, behind me to my right from Newfield Construction, Brian Grant to my left here, Dave Bodie from Waterbury Development Corp., Bryce Sensus is behind the camera, our architect. And we're here to just present, and I think, Dave, do you have the PowerPoint? Can you pull that up?
I can.
I'm going to pull up the PowerPoint. Just going to run through it quickly, and you can certainly stop me, Commissioner, if you need to. But then, we'll open it up for questions and get specifically into the change order and the status of the project and looking forward.
Perfect.
So just to orient everybody, and we'll pull this up in a second here. But we have been on-site and working on the project now for a few months. As you know, you've approved one and phase two, and that's the demolition piece and the concrete steel piece. The demolition was all completed, and now we're well into the concrete and steel phase. We get out now phase three, and we're moving forward. So just reorienting everybody, here's our project and what it's going to look like. Well, we're experiencing our...
They are not example.
Yeah, technical difficulties. Just reminding everybody, we're talking about a pre-K8 school. We're expanding to 667 students, and we'll have three classes per grade in the 44,000 square foot, going from a 44,000 square foot building, what we worked, to maybe 6,000 square foot building. As you recall, the aesthetics and the design of the building very much mirrors what we went through at Carrington. So you'll see a lot of similarities as the building moves along. So as I mentioned, we went through phase, we're into phase two now in earnest, the site's concrete and steel, and moving forward into phase three as the spring and summer comes upon us.
There we go.
There we go. So there's the reorienting you to the site. You can push ahead to the next one as well when you're ready.
Next one.
And this just brings you back to the project data again. We're expanding the school, total reconstruction, other than a little elevator in the corner, very much like Carrington. And if you jump ahead to the next slide, we're essentially in phase three now, finishing up the concrete steel, next slide. And here's where we are today. So what we've got for you tonight, we asked for you to approve through this committee as a first change order. And this change order is the best kind of a change order. It's a slight credit. It's a credit of $1,769.99, and essentially, it's a bunch of elements that were found during the demolition phase and the concrete phase, essentially moving some manholes and some drainage issues. Once we got in the ground, had to install with a WPCA and move some pipes around. So that added to some elements of the project. But we also found some credits as we went along with the work of the team, and were able to make some adjustments in other aspects, essentially of that same drainage and flow system. So the net of that is a savings of this first change order of $1,769.99. So as we get through this, we'll actually ask for you to approve that. As we went through this, just to give you a quick update of where we are, obviously COVID has hit, and that has made some adjustments in the site, but everyone has jumped on board, the contractors have stayed engaged. We've adjusted, working with the state. Newfield's done a great job managing the site. I was there today, had my temperature checked as I came on the site. PPE is available for everybody, and all the contractors follow specific check-ins, protocols, and protocols on the site. So the construction has continued because the work was primarily outside during this period of time. We really don't have any issues of tight spaces and folks on top of each other, they're able to distance accordingly. The one issue we sort of, we have had is with COVID, is we expect the steel. The steel fabricator is in Canada, and they actually shut down the operation for a few weeks. So that put us back a few weeks, and that's still getting on-site. But as you'll see in some of the photos I'll share in a moment, the steel has come on-site. There's more coming, and while that sort of delayed us a couple of weeks in that steel production, we're looking to catch back up on some of that time moving forward, and weather permitting, we'll be moving through the next phases of the project. We've also have encountered some soil issues. As you recall, we did a number of borings throughout the project, gets a bunch of issues with remediation of environmental issues. But what we found here is some soil problems that aren't environmental in that sense, but they are what's called unsuitable soils, or soils basically you can't build on in certain areas. So I think many of our board members may be familiar with issues we've had with fire projects, REED, Rams, and so forth. So this team, particularly Mike at WDC, is very acutely aware of those issues. So Newfield, Fire, the team is watching these elements like a hawk, and we have to make some adjustments as we want to make sure the soil is compacted properly, any unsuitable soil is removed. So we're working through that process now. There'll be more to come on that. I do expect to be back to you with another change order probably in another month or so, as we work through all the soil issues. The good news is, we'll work through those and keep moving. If these are things, I would say, we'll get to answer questions and talk more deeply about it, that had we known these things through the borings a little bit more specifically, they would have been part of the bid anyway, so they would have been captured either earlier or later. They've kind of been captured now, and it's a sense essentially around where the borings are. Once they got into the rock, it wasn't sort of the right kind of rock, so to speak, it wasn't the right kind of soil as you went left or right. So we basically have to work through that. Again, the team can get into more detail on that as needed. So those are the main kind of updates. I don't know if we can pull back the PowerPoint if we have an issue, but I have some photos we can run through quickly and show you, and yes, we're answering questions in the interest of time. But I'll stop there, and we've got everyone on the team here to answer questions, and then we can sort of make some follow-up and final comments on look ahead and where we'll be moving, which essentially is completion of the steel and concrete phase and all the foundation work, most of which is wrapped up already. And then really, you'll see that construction start to come out of the hill. So let me stop there and take a pause, and Commissioner Field, give us some other questions.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Do any of my committee members have any questions of Will or the team regarding what we just learned? Melissa.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for the update. Well, I guess my only question is, obviously, because of the COVID, everything has been delayed. But as far as date of completion, what are we looking at now?
At this point, I think it's too early to tell. I think one thing we can know for sure is that with that steel in Canada directly related to the COVID, we know that was a few weeks later than we would have liked. We're working through those soil issues, and we'll have more to say on that. We're not at a point where we're formally moving anything, because as construction projects go, you know, you could gain back time in other areas as well. We've been blessed, knock on wood here, with the weather thus far, and we're hoping with the continued spring and summer that we can move along and coordinate the contractors and keep on going and catch up some of the time. But as we really finalize some of the soil stuff, I don't want to understate that, we'll be back and discuss that thoroughly with you as all those final tests and adjustments are made, and that could have some impact. But again, we don't want to slide anything at this point. We do have, I would say, the luxury of our current location, you know, that's something we control and can remain if we had to. But we want to keep pushing, and everyone's goal is to catch up any time and do our best to stick with the schedule. If that should come to a point where that needs to be adjusted, we will be back and explain that and talk through that. But we are continuing to push along as best we can and work together as a team to make this happen as quickly as possible.
Thank you. And you guys, thank you guys so much, and please continue to stay safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Question, Melissa, anybody else from the committee? Rock? Got to unmute yourself, buddy. There you go.
Hi, again, thank you for the update. Question, are all the bids in from all the areas of, and are all the contracts done with all the subcontractors?
Well, I can take that. Yeah, so, yes, Rocco, there were, as part of the incorporating the final phase before, or the final phases that relates to the construction side of it, there were 18 bid packages that all went out, and all of those have come in and have been, gone through the scope review process and ultimately locking in the pricing with the lowest qualified bidder. Is, just to give you a little bit of background, I believe the last time we had met, we had identified that as a result of those bids coming in substantially less than the construction estimates had originally projected, we actually shifted from potentially needing additional money on the project to being in a scenario where we actually had some additional monies that were, are currently held in an owner-controlled contingency. The issues that Will was alluding to with the unsuitable soils in the rock, these are, at the end of the day, going to be in the category of significant. But where we are projecting at this point is, if things stay the course and stay within the projections that we currently have in place, we'll be able to accommodate these unanticipated issues within the overall project budget as we go forward. As Will had mentioned, we will be back. It'll probably be sometime this summer with two requests. It'll be for a change order as well as for an amendment to the Newfield contract to make available within that contract the owner-controlled contingency funds that we have in place.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Carrie Baker?
My question is, and I know it's further down, further down the line, but with the COVID issues and not knowing where we're going to, like in terms of what needs to be in the classroom, what's being done? Because I haven't heard all of the, you know, like, obviously, we're probably starting to look at desks, or we're probably starting to look at those furniture pieces soon if we haven't started already. Is there, like, are we putting some thought into what happens if things need to be revamped in terms of what a classroom needs to look like?
That's a great question, Carrie. Thank you for that. And it's a sort of a segue back to that, we wanted to just touch on phase four and phase five, and we are in the process of moving forward with the technology and the furniture pieces, just as you described. As you know, we've had a number of meetings with staff and with you and others about the needs of the building. So those are all in the mix. But we are, to your point, understanding the technology needs and what might shift. And so we are in this point where we're, on the one hand, still have to work within the DAS rules of what's considered eligible and ineligible, and on the other hand, try to be as flexible as possible with the equipment and the furniture and so forth, that we can accommodate a variety of different issues and needs. To some degree, those are coming together, because a lot of the talk with the faculty and the team in the design discussions was around different types of furniture that could be used in different ways, and not sort of the stock, you know, five chairs in five rows type of thing. So we're pretty confident in the way that the current plan is, that it's very flexible, and so chairs can be moved around and adjusted and put different configurations to spread out and so forth, and be moved in different spaces. So we're comfortable with that on the technology front with the distance learning piece. We were already anticipating the use of more laptops and carts and so forth. As you well know, this school is long-needed technology, so this is going to be a breath of fresh air regardless. But we are very cognizant about, particularly in the area of the computer lab, and what types of devices are in the classroom versus what types we've historically purchased. So that is very much in the design discussions going on right now, and will be part of that phase four, which is an FFNEU computer piece that'll be going on later this summer and into the fall. So we have a little bit of time on some of those pieces, particularly on the technology, but we're very much talking to our curriculum people, and we'll probably get some more feedback from the school as well. I would also say, we were on-site today, and we had folks from DAS with us as well looking at some of the issues, and one of the things I asked them was, are they relaxing any of their rules with respect to the reality of distance learning? Because currently, the rules don't even fund laptops and mobile devices. Would they fund those as part of the adjusted rules? And the reply was, there has been no change yet, but I think those discussions are happening. So we're definitely going to follow up with that with the state, because obviously, having those is reimbursable expenses used to the benefit of all of us. But we definitely are thinking about the flexibility and how the adjustments have happened for the student and parent and staff over this last year, because we want this, obviously, to be able to live on for many years and make this an investment for the last.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Anybody else? I see none, Will.
Okay, so, I mean, that, we had a little bit of a technical difficulty. I had some photos, and we can share the PowerPoint and other means to you, but basically, we had some photos in the deck that essentially showed you the construction, the demolition, then a clean slate of dirt, and then concrete on top of dirt, and then steel on top of concrete. So it kind of progressed, so you can put that in your mind's eye and envision it. One thing I would say is being on the site today, for those of you, Carrie and others who've been with me since, when we talked about building into the site, that was an interesting theory to talk about. Mike, myself, and others who were there today realized it and saw it, I mean, how they are building in that retaining wall. It's not this huge retaining wall, it really kind of feeds right into the site. The driveway where you really just to go up and more steep incline is much more of an open area, it seems to me, and as the building comes up, I think it's really going to create a very interesting site that'll have good views from the site, but really good views coming to the site. And as you come off that driveway, not a steep climb, but a nice even climb, and then this beautiful building. So at least as one part of the plan that was talked about, you can really see it as you go by the site, as you walk it now, much less steep, much more leveled off, and building into the site just as they had said they would. So I don't know if you guys have any other comments to throw in. But other than that, I think if, Commissioner, if you could approve the change order, I think we don't need to take this all the way up the ladder as it's a credit, but getting it through the committee would be beneficial to us, and we can put that in our minutes and in our notes in our project file if and when we come back on change orders, as Mike described. Obviously, that would go through the whole process to the Board of Alderman and so forth, if you adjust contracts and budgets and things. But this one's a credit, it's within the contract, you've already approved, so it's really just more of a ministerial check of the base, covering the committee, making sure we've checked in with you, and you fill out the files, we're good to go.
And that's fine, and I know email'd be some information backing it up. I can't access my email. Do we have a number or some way to note which change order we'd be okaying today?
Change order number one.
That's easy enough. With that being said, I would look for a motion to approve change order one in the amount of negative, how many dollars, Will? Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? I don't see any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else for the good of the project, Will, you wanted to talk about while we're here?
No, I think that's it. I mean, we'll work with you, Jason, to schedule the summer meeting when we're ready with some more information. And Mike and I were discussing today on the site, I think as we get into the summer, we can maybe get the committee out there to take a peek and take a walk around to see what's coming up, that you can really see and start to shake shake.
I'd like that.
So we can arrange that as well.
Rocco will bring his own shovel. Terrific.
I could buy it every day.
All right, well, there's nothing else. I'd like to thank all the folks who joined us, Alderman, DiGiann Carlo, Carrie, Dave, our community folks, everyone from the team. I appreciate it. Many of you, I'll see in six minutes. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good evening, everyone, to this Thursday, June 18th, 2020, regular meeting of the Waterbury, Connecticut Board of Education. Our virtual meeting tonight is via Zoom technology. Dr. Ruffin, would you like to lead off in a silent prayer? Comments?
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. In our moment of silence this evening, let us remember former members of our Waterbury Public School System education community who have passed away. Jean Farrell, retired Waterbury teacher, passed away on May 15. Bryant Malley, former teacher at Westside Middle School, passed away on May 17. Mary McDonald, former teacher at Sprague Elementary School, passed away on May 18. Jean Drexler, former Education Department employee, passed away on May 29. Elizabeth Bergen, retired paraprofessional, passed away on May 31. Desla, retired Waterbury teacher, passed away on June 4. Dawn DeVito, former Education Department employee, passed away on June 5. Pamela Zarstey, former office aide, passed away on June 12. Mary Shay, former food service worker, passed away on June 14. Let us remember our former employees and the families who mourned their loss, and thanking their families for the service to Waterbury Public Schools.
Commissioner Charles Stango, with their freshly shaved face, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance tonight?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and just for all.
Grazie, and thank you, Commissioner.
Back.
Secretary, I mean, Clerk Swain, would you do a roll call, please?
Okay. Commissioner Brown?
She's here, but muted.
All right, this is Karen, I'm in.
Okay, Vice President Harvey?
I'm in.
Commissioner Hernandez? She said she might be late, just an FYI. Commissioner Orso?
Present.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Present.
President Pagano?
Present.
Okay.
Cool.
Our next agenda item is communications. I'd like to get a motion to receive and place on file communications as listed. Commissioner Ann Sweeney?
Motion to receive and place on file communications as listed.
Second.
Discussion? Is that you raising your hand, Commissioner Harvey?
No, I was putting myself.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes. Our next motion is the approval of a minutes. I'd like to get a motion to approve those minutes. Commissioner Ann Sweeney, one more time, please.
Motion to approve minutes as listed. Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, President Pagano.
Go for it.
All right, well, just a quick comment. These meeting minutes, I want to thank Carrie, because the meeting minutes were 30 pages long, and normally, they're not that long. So I hope that we will, I know it was kind of an emergency for the presentation, but I hope that we will, you know, maintain, you know, having our workshop and things presented there as opposed to having them at our regular meeting. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, President Pagano.
Thank you, Vice President Harvey, and thank you, Clerk Swain. And for the gift, we're going to send you to Oz. All right, next agenda item is the public addresses to the board. Commissioner Ann Sweeney, one more time. Can I get a motion?
President Pagano?
Motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Yep.
Can I have a question? On the approval of the minutes, when Karen asked the question, I don't think we voted.
We didn't vote on it.
We didn't vote on it.
Oh, we didn't?
No.
All right, I thought I said all in favor. All in favor on the motion to, on the second of the acceptance of the minute?
Aye.
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 Abstained? Nay? Thank you. Motion passes.
All right.
Now, Commissioner Sweeney, can I have a motion to suspend us?
Motion to suspend the regular order of business to hear from the public?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? Nay? The motion passes. We are now on with public speaking.
Okay, I have the list, so as your name is called, please state your name and address for the record, and you have a five-minute time limit. Shelby Williams?
Yes, that's me. And thank you, everyone, for your time. Good evening. I hope everyone is safe and well. And thank you, everyone, for your time. Good evening. I hope everyone is safe and well, and we're able to hear you. My name is, as you know, Shelby Williams, and I am a representative of the Voices of Women of Color. A for-profit policy firm that alleges matters related to public policy in the community. I stand in solidarity with the voices who call for justice and demanding that the Waterbury Police Department be held accountable for their actions during the Black Lives Matter protests. As a Willby High School alumni of the past year of two thousand sixteen, I had experienced firsthand the negative impact police personnel has had on the student bodies as it's interactive and oppressive force. Compared to other higher education institutions in the state, Willby High School has been run below average in school quality and overall college readiness. Unfortunately, its inadequate school rating is corresponding with high rates of arrests and policing. I urge you to decriminalize our public schools, and I speak on behalf of the Voices of Women of Color that we have an open-door policy to counsel those who require training in delivering diversity conscious initiatives towards education, policy, and safety. And I hope that you do look forward to the future legislation session as well for policies that can also encourage these ideas. Thank you for your time, and I speak on behalf of everyone that I'm very concerned for the future of our children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker, Elise Taylor. If I'm saying it correctly, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, you said it correctly. Elise Taylor, seventy-four Wilson Street. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Elise Taylor, First Vice President of the Waterbury NAACP Youth Council and a rising freshman at task. This evening, I want to applaud the efforts of Jackie Henry for her leadership, courage, and willingness to meet a need for fellow graduates. We know that we're in the midst of a pandemic, but we know we have to stay home, wear masks when we venture out on social distance. Being home, we have also seen other school districts find a way to celebrate the graduation ceremony. Jackie Henry tried to get the Waterbury Public School to do just that. She put up a petition on change.org, gathered over a thousand signatures, and still no movement. So she did what all leaders do. She took a risk. She found her part, and she organized her very own graduation celebration in the midst of a pandemic. Jackie Henry is a model of leadership, civic engagement, and civil mindedness. There's a quote that says, "Do not wait on a leader. Look in the mirror. It's you." We should all applaud the leadership of Jackie Henry. Thank you. Stay safe.
Thank you for your comments. Next one?
Our next speaker is Kyla Ireland, I believe. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kyla Ireland. I live on one fifty-nine Clinton Street. Good evening to all the respected members on this meeting. Like I said, my name is Kyla Ireland. I'm Second Vice President of the Waterbury Pride NAACP Youth Council, and I recently graduated from Willby High School. I'm here to talk about policing in schools and how I feel about it. Although I haven't had any personal experiences with police in schools, doesn't mean that others haven't. I've seen viral videos of police overusing their power in schools, and that in itself makes me very uncomfortable. I think of the situations that haven't been caught on camera and the situations that can happen and won't get the attention that they deserve. Policing schools should be replaced with better equipped people like therapists and effective school counselors to help people work through these issues without having to get the police or law enforcement involved. In many studies across the world, it's been proven that most Latinx and Black students don't feel comfortable with having officers in their schools or going to those officers in their schools, and that's very understandable with everything that goes on in the world, such as racial profiling and police brutality. And now, of course, the argument of how will students be, how will schools be prepared to defend themselves if there's ever a school shooting? That argument's always going to come up, and my response to that is security and/or police can be present, they just shouldn't be as present as they are. They shouldn't be the main and first people that a student goes to if they have a problem. Police should be available for emergencies. Like I stated before, therapists and effective school counselors should be properly funded to help students and policing in schools. And policing schools should be taken out to help better the school environment. Schools are a place to learn. I personally know a young man that at the age of ten was arrested over a strong misunderstanding of another student and was intimidated into going through a program for troubled students that he cried about the entire situation. So policing in schools doesn't help much and can often make the matters worse, and that young man's story is a perfect example because now at the age of ten, he has an arrest on his record because of a misunderstanding of it. That's going to follow him all throughout middle school, all throughout high school, all throughout life. Defund policing schools and put that money into therapists and other resources that can help students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next caller in?
Okay, our next speaker is Cindy, and it begins with a P. I'm sorry, I can't read the writing. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Cindy Pineda. I live in twenty-one Mansfield. I just wanted to take this time to say good evening to everyone and all respected members on the board. Like I said, my name is Cindy Pineda, and I am a concerned Waterbury community member. I attended Wallace Middle School, and I went to Crosby High School my freshman year. I wanted to take this time to express how I've been feeling since the protest, peaceful protest that occurred on May thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Many of our fellow Waterbury residents went out to take a stand against the police brutality and vocalize the racial injustices that keep occurring in this country. And I'm pretty angry and disappointed with the way the police treated protesters. Our community has become another example of police utilizing brutality as a weapon against protesters. It has come to my attention that there were twenty-eight people arrested, including minors. From the videos that I saw, you see police officers wear white gears and using many forms of intimidation against protesters. Instead of the police standing with us, we were reminded once again of the traumas an individual endures from the way the police treat unharmed individuals. If a person steps one foot onto the road, the police grab them and blind them onto the ground or onto police cars, treating these protesters like they're criminals. That, to me, is completely uncalled for. It creates more fear and less trust towards the police. These protesters who were arrested were former Waterbury Public School graduates. I would like to also add that Waterbury was the only city or town in Connecticut to have protesters arrested. There's no excuse for the police to have treated our community that way. Therefore, I bring this problem forward to the Waterbury Board of Education to make aware that many students, parents, and graduates were affected by this event. I have not heard any public official release of statements to speak of the ways police handled the protests, which was heartbreaking and disgusting. Many of these videos were shared on social media, police demonstrating brutality towards their community. As a fellow student from the Waterbury Public School, I would not feel comfortable around the police. I'm also part of the Latinx community. I would feel as though there's not enough trust between students and a police officer. As this event was shared on social media, it makes us have anxiety for our Latinx and Black students that are part of the public schools. I do not see how Waterbury Public Schools promote a safe learning environment when our students do not feel comfortable and fear the police, but we need to see them in school. My opinion on the matter is that the Waterbury Board of Education can use alternative ways to care for our students. To my understanding, we have school resource officers in our public schools. They care about enforcing the law first than trying to counsel students. I would suggest that if our public schools have more mental health specialists and behavior specialists, then it would help to escalate situations with students as well as give students the opportunity to be able to confine an individual without any fear. Therefore, I call for you to take a stand against actions from the police department that occurred on May thirty-first. I call that you would have a conversation with the Black and Latinx students, with leaders from their communities. I call that you begin creating a plan and ask the Board of Element to reallocate funds and invest more mental health resources for the Black and Latinx students. I call for the position for talent and professional development positions to be filled and hire more teachers of the Black and Latinx community. I call for more action to be done for our students, and these calls to action are heard. May thirty-first was a devastating event for our community and students and should have never been experienced. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller?
Okay, our next speaker is Mercedes Cruz. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Mercedes Cruz. I live on thirteen fifty-three Bank Street. So one thing that I do agree on is with Kyla, she previously spoke about how we should use the police officers in our school as only emergency, not somebody that we consistently go through. I do think that half of these police officers that are in this school do not have higher education as half of these high schoolers do. So with that being said, they should be trained more for this escalating thing. They're only trained, which I don't know if you're aware of, three days out of a year for de-escalation problems, and they should be able to be trained more. They should also be watched and put on a one-year probation before being on their own. Another thing I do suggest is you guys fight more for funding for the schools, for the learning for the kids, and to have more after-school programs for them, so that way they're out of the streets because some kids don't have things to do and are on the streets and are put into things that aren't good for them. So you, as not only the board, should care for them more, but to help them participate in more community things and more after-school things for them to do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next caller, please.
Our next speaker, it looks like Makli Karate, forgive me if I'm pronouncing wrong. Please state your name and address for the record. Again, it looks like Makli Karate. Okay, can we try Tyler Wren?
Hello, and good evening to the board. My name is Tyler Wren, and I live at one oh nine Ridgeway Avenue in Bunker Hill, and I graduated from Kennedy in two thousand fifteen. So the reason I am addressing you today is myself and along with other community members have compiled a list of alternatives to having police officers in schools based on previously done by other organizations and pulling inspiration from many other alternatives that have worked. You have heard of some research from people that spoke before me, and you will hear some more about people who will speak after me and some testimony, so I am offering alternatives to the current system that we have. Firstly, we would call to end the regular presence of law enforcement in schools, to remove any law enforcement personnel that are assigned to be present on a regular basis in and around a school or a set of schools during regular school hours and many school-run activities in the building. This would prohibit a regular presence, such as being stationed full or part-time in a school or set of schools, making daily or weekly visits, or the inclusion of a school in an office of regular need. This includes school resource officers, police, security officers, and any other law enforcement personnel that meet the following criteria, such as having the power to arrest, detain, interrogate, question, fine, or ticket students on municipal codes, juvenile, criminal, immigration-related matters, have the power to punish youth for violations of probation or parole, carry any type of weapon, including, but not limited to, a firearm, baton, phaser, rubber bullets, beanbag, mace, pepper spray, and/or carry handcuffs or other forms of restraint, report to or certify to receive training from a police department, including personnel who can report students to a gang database or other police databases. Schools should also prohibit any staff from carrying the weapons described above. Secondly, we should create, state schools through positive safety and discipline measures. We can support schools to create safety and support departments for learning to build relationships, to students get to the root of the problems in the school and surrounding community, and prevent, prevent, and address safety concerns in a way that protects the health, well-being, and human rights of students and staff. State districts and schools should shift resources away from practicing staff and the criminalized students and invest in positive approaches in school staff funded through the core education budget, including employing staff trained to ensure safe and positive school climate, school climate such as community intervention workers, teach holders, transformative or restorative justice coordinators, behavior interventionists, school aides, counselors, and other support staff. Goals for these staff would include helping to prevent and address safety concerns and conflict, monitoring school entrances and ensure a welcoming environment, respond to the root causes of behavior, prevent and intervene to stop intergroup and interethnic tension, address students' needs. These staff to have ongoing training and support for all school staff and positive approaches to school climate and discipline, promoting youth and parent leadership within the school through leadership councils to have an integral role in creating, implementing, monitoring, and evaluating space and support of school climate, intentional recruiting of Black and Latino administrators, teachers, school safety, and support staff training, and the positive approaches above to ensure that the school staff reflects the communities in which they are working. We would also call to restrict the role of law enforcement that are called into schools, only calling police in a worst-case scenario. Myself and fellow community members are extremely concerned on this subject. I encourage further dialogue on this, and I hope you take these suggestions seriously. I also have a testimony from a fellow Waterbury Public School alumni who went to WAM, and I will quote her verbatim because she cannot be here. My testimony is the many times I have witnessed colorism when it came to disciplinary cautions with students. If there were ever any school fights or misconduct, there would always be a finger pointed at me, pointed at whoever was darker. I personally ended up in a group of diverse kids, but I was somewhat the token black friend. There have been multiple times that my school security or officer would pick me out of the crowd, even if I wasn't the one being envious or embunished or causing trouble. Many times, I've seen disagreements with teachers and students. If the students were fair-skinned or white, they were normally escorted by another teacher, student principal, or hall monitor. I have personally only ever seen Afro-Latino or Black-Erdian kids be escorted by police. That visual on its own set the standard within a school. Thank you for your time, and I hope you take these suggestions seriously, and I appreciate the board hearing us.
Thank you very much for your comments. Very thoughtful. Our next caller?
All right, give me a second here.
All right.
I'm coming. I'm sorry, I'm splitting my screen here. Give me a second. All right. It looks like we're going to try the last one again. Michaela, Michaela LaRatti?
It's Michaela Barrett. That's me.
Michaela Barrett? Okay, five-minute statement, name and address for the record, please.
Michaela Barrett, one thirty-seven Woodlawn Terrace. Good evening, respected members of the board. As stated before, my name is Michaela Barrett, and I graduated from Kennedy High School in two thousand fifteen. I'm here today to speak of the negative effects of police presence in schools. In many schools, police officers, school resource officers, surveillance cameras, zero tolerance policies, random searches, and more are considered normal and necessary to keep children safe and are increasingly becoming a part of the experiences of schoolchildren. However, the salience and purpose of school police in the protection and punishment of students needs to be questioned and redeveloped to prioritize students and assure what is best for them. I'm proposing to remove police officers from all Waterbury Public Schools completely. Several school districts have done this and found success and proven that it can be done. For example, Minneapolis, Portland, Seattle, Denver, Oakland. In Canada specifically, the Toronto District School Board voted to.
Did we lose her?
Um, Michaela Barrett, we're sorry, we had some technical difficulty. Yeah, difficulty. You can start over.
Okay. Perfect, okay. There we go. Good afternoon, respected members of the board. Again, my name is Michaela Barrett, and I graduated from Kennedy High School in two thousand sixteen, and I'm here today to speak of the negative effects of police presence in schools. In many schools, police officers, school resource officers, surveillance cameras, zero tolerance policies, random searches, and more are considered normal and necessary to keep children safe and are increasingly becoming a part of the experiences of schoolchildren. However, the salience and purpose of school police in the protection and punishment of students needs to be questioned and redeveloped to prioritize students and assure what is best for them. I'm proposing to remove police officers from all Waterbury Public Schools completely. Several school districts have found success and proven that it can be done. For example, Minneapolis, Portland, Seattle, Denver, Oakland. And in Canada specifically, the Toronto District School Board voted to stop having officers in schools, and in the three years since, expulsions and suspensions have significantly decreased. I did not have my own experiences with the police in Kennedy. I've spent the last few years at UConn studying the effects of the criminal justice system, and I have learned a great deal of the negative effects of the police presence in schools. Countless studies have been conducted by experts to assess the effects of. Countless studies have been conducted by experts to assess the effects of police in schools. For example, research at North Carolina State University proved that the presence of police in schools does not improve students. Researchers at Arizona State University showed by surveys that students across middle and high school feel less safe with the higher police presence. In fact, it has been shown that cops in schools disproportionately harm students of color, disabled students, and core students who are already at risk. Studies have shown that Black, Brown, and Indigenous students across the nation are more likely to be suspended from schools. In particular, data has shown that in the state of Connecticut, Black youth are ten times more likely to be arrested than white youth, and third is that it portrayed that these children are four more likely to be incarcerated by the time they are twenty-five. Additionally, there has also been examples of police in schools using excessive force. Senator Chris Murphy, using the example of a six-year-old who was arrested for getting in a fight at school, both la- that he believes police should be removed from our school. NCT, Bridgeport cops were accused of using excessive force on students. Furthermore, cops in schools actually correlate with less academic achievement. A study from Harvard found that more police in and around New York City neighborhoods caused a decline in test scores of specifically Black male students. This was due to more frequent absences attributed to avoiding the threat of arrest. Those students who are most at risk of problems in schools and dropping out are the ones who are more affected by these counterproductive policies. These studies have shown that policing the school system is significantly more harmed than good. Allowing them to remain in schools prohibits children obtaining the education they have the right to gain, and in some cases, may set them up for failure. I believe in the city of Waterbury, and I fervently believe that this city can achieve great things for its youth and set them up for success instead of possible failure. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, our next speaker is Ireland Gilmore. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ireland. Ireland Gilmore, forty-eight, Buena Vista Circle. Good evening, Dr. President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, and all other respected commissioners of the board. Um, my name is Ireland Gilmore, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of community members in Waterbury. I'm speaking to all today because I have felt outraged, angry, helpless, and confused ever since May thirty-first. On May thirty-first, Black Lives Matter protests engulfed their city as people came together to take a stand for racial justice and against police brutality, which was sparked by George Floyd's murder in Minneapolis. However, from watching videos from these protests, I was reminded the problem of police brutality and violence is not just in Minneapolis, it is here in our city of Waterbury. At these protests, police arrested twenty-eight people, including two minors. Majority of those arrested were women. Those two minors were most likely Waterbury Public School students, and many other of the other twenty-six were graduates of Waterbury Public Schools. In videos taken at the protest, Waterbury Police Officers can be seen in riot gear, holding batons, chasing protesters, using police dogs to intimidate protesters, and even using horses to intimidate them as well. Additionally, when given orders to arrest because people were in the street, peacefully, I might add, or stepped even one foot into the road, protesters were ripped off the sidewalk, tackled into the ground by multiple police officers, slammed into the side of police cars, shoved into the back of police cars, and had multiple officers place all of their body weight on their backs. One of the two minors was brutally tackled and driven into the ground by multiple police officers. It is on video and online. People were held overnight, overnight, and many did not know what they were charged with. Additionally, Waterbury was the only city or town in Connecticut that arrested protesters. Though Ms. Maureen Platt will not be presumed charges, Chief Spagnola doubled down on the arrest today and in comments to NBC Connecticut last night. This is a problem for the Waterbury Board of Education because Waterbury Public School students, parents, and graduates were affected by the event. No public officials have come out and made any statements about the events to stand with protesters. The silence is deafening. If you watch these videos of these arrests found on social media and the interactions with police and protesters, you would be sick. If an organized group of police cannot refrain, refrain from escalating arresting and brutalizing protesters, how are we allowing them in Waterbury Public Schools to help with children in distress? More importantly, these violent video, these violent arrest videos were shared thousands of times on social media. This is an extremely traumatizing reality, and the trust between police and students has been deeply broken. How is Waterbury Public Schools providing safe learning environments if students are afraid of police yet have them in schools? In Waterbury Police, uh, in Waterbury Public Schools, policing does not just come in the form of school resource officers or police officers as many of the people before we spoke about. I call on you to condemn the Waterbury Police Department for their actions on May thirty-first, and I call on you to ask for apology from them to the city. I call on you to stand with protesters by not only saying you feel sorry about George Floyd's death, but also by standing against what is happening in this city. I call on each one of you to have a dialogue with Black and Latinx students in the city, not in a town hall run and organized by people in power, but through dialogue organized by leaders, especially youth leaders in Black and Latinx communities and in their spaces. I call on you to work toward removing police officers in school and schools in Waterbury. I call on each of you to work together to form a plan about more mental health resources for Black and Latinx students in the summer and in the fall. Due to the traumatic events in Waterbury that occurred on May thirty-first, the tragic events across our nation that happen every day, and this pandemic. I call on you to fill the talent and professional development position and work to hire more Black and Latinx teachers by even having a goal set each year. I call on you to ask the Board of Education to allocate money from other areas and invest this money in Black and Latinx youth programs in this city. I call on each of you to learn and listen and to not let this moment pass. May thirty-first happened, and we will not forget. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Next caller, Carrie.
Okay, our next speaker is Alyssa Nessus. I'm sorry, I'm trying to read the writing here. Are you out there, Alyssa?
Alyssa, yes, Alyssa Hughes, fifteen Bellevue Street.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm also speaking on behalf, I'm also speaking on behalf of what happened May thirty-first, as everyone repeated. The police officers came in riot gear to a preschool protest in the presence of minors' children. I urge that the Board of Education make a statement on behalf of those minors present and the ones that were arrested also. I also urge that the Board of Education demand that NBC Connecticut, who recorded the video of the protest in the presence of, um, the minors in front of the police station, demand that that video be made public and show the unlawful arrests that were committed in front of children, in front of minors, where dogs were also present as, as also riot gear. I demand that the Board of Education require more training for police officers that enter their schools or are completely removed if the training is not adhering to what they are supposed to serve for students. If Waterbury Police only have three, three days of training for de-escalating and one day of diversity, how can they possibly cater to a city composed of predominantly Black and Brown people, especially children and minors? I demand that the Board of Education make, again, a statement on what happened, May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, in Waterbury, Connecticut, while in the presence of minors. I also demand that the, what, the Board of Education take into account that the police officers, when they need arrest, especially if unlawful to children in schools, that the rights are applied to the students and general public in the schools as they would be in general public. So no illegal searches, no excessive force. Students deserve to have their rights applied just as much in the schools as they are in public. As well as students should not have to suffer consequences from being arrested in schools as far as being expelled or, or suspended when a, a arrest could possibly be unlawful. So they should look into those cases. Um, I also demand that the Board of Education demand more funding, more funding for students to cater to after-school activities or, or things. The police department has more funding than the Board of Education, and that makes absolutely no sense. So I demand that the Board of Education have a voice and, and make a standpoint, and again, address what happened, May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Carrie, next speaker.
Our next speaker, um, May, May Hun Falton?
Is it Nikor Vincent?
Um.
Hello?
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm reading from another list. Go ahead, state your name and address for the record. Please spell it, too.
But my name is Nikor Vincent. Yep, Nikor Vincent, N as in Nancy, A as in apple, C as in Charlie, H as in horse, O as in octopus, R as in reindeer, and Vincent, V as in victory, I as in igloo, N as in Nancy, C as in corn, E as in elephant, N as in Nancy, and T as in Tom. I live at ninety-nine Rainy Street here in Waterbury, Connecticut. And my comments are in regards to one of my fellow friends in classmates, Ms. Jackie Henry, who did not receive her diploma yesterday because, and I told, her diploma was withheld because she canned an unsincined school event on behalf of Waterbury Public Schools. What she did not, after reviewing all the, um, posts she made, she did not mention nothing about the Waterbury Public Schools. She just mentioned that it was for Waterbury seniors. I feel like this is unfair. I feel like it's petty, and this does seem like bullying. I wish, I would like for an accurate explanation on why she did not receive her diploma. Just a little insight on Jackie, she is the founder of We Have Achieved Campaign, and she is also a student of the National Honor Society. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Carrie, next one.
Okay, our next speaker looks like A Vincent? Anybody out there with an initial A, last name Vincent? Okay, how about, um, Mayhei Argi?
That'd be Nancy Vincent?
Yes, maybe that's it.
Is that Nancy Vincent?
Yes. Okay, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nancy Vincent. I live at ninety-nine Rainy Street. I would like to know what law that Jackie Henry breaks that would cause the superintendent of schools to withhold her high school diploma? Now, these seniors have endured a major disappointment regarding their graduation, and yet, when they came up with a solution, it was rejected. Now, Jackie's ceremony was not held on school properties, and there was no funding from the school, the Department of Education. So it, it's just unacceptable for her high school diploma to be withheld without a excuse. So please give Jackie Henry her diploma. If, if this superintendent has any compassion or heart, she would give this young lady her well-deserved high school diploma. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Carrie, next speaker.
Mayhei Argi? David Muniz?
Yeah, hello?
Is this Dave? Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Muniz. Uh, I live on two seventy-eight Austin Road. Uh, so, I'm a community member here in Waterbury. Uh, I'm employed at the Waterbury YMCA, and I work through, uh, an after-school program here, so I have a close relationship with the Board of Education and the, uh, school system there. And I'd like to share that both through my employment and my personal experiences. I've had the opportunity to observe and analyze the state of the board, and I must say that the biases that I have witnessed and became aware of in our school system are both unacceptable and show a complete lack of sensitivity or empathy for the community that we serve. Um, personally speaking, I remember being in the third grade and treating, and being treated like a criminal by a teacher that wasn't even my own. I was involved in an altercation with another student, uh, in which that teacher came out in those moments and smiled at me while speaking about the trouble that I'd get in, and she reported only what she saw on my end. And, um, my case was neither heard by the principal nor that, nor that teacher. And weeks after the incident, um, I was, uh, returned back to the office and spoke with the vice principal of the school, and I remember this very vividly in my mind, her saying, since I wanted to act like a punk, I would be treated like one. And then that same day, the, uh, Water, there was a police officer, a resource officer called down from, um, the high school that I had spoken to those days, or that day, and, um, I was, I remember, in, in third grade, put in the back of the paddy wagon for what, uh, seems to have been the purpose of some type of rehabilitative conversation. Um, this was a vivid memory that I have that very much, uh, traumatized me and my childhood. And so my point in saying this is that, uh, you know, flashing forward a couple decades, uh, or a little over a decade later, with my employment opportunity, I now have the, um, I had the opportunity to work back at that school. And, um, one of my coworkers was actually, uh, Para that worked there, and she spoke to me about the number of teachers that worked there that do not live here in the District of Waterbury. Um, as I'm pretty sure you guys know, that's a problem that we have with our school system. You might, you may not view that as a problem, but we have teachers that come in from, um, suburban towns surrounding us that are, you know, in charge of teaching our youth. And these, uh, teachers, the same Para actually mentioned to me, uh, conversations that she's heard in this, uh, in the school, uh, saying that these teachers are saying things such as, oh, if this, if this student's, uh, parents is, you know, come from a low-income community or a low-income, uh, household, why is this student wearing, you know, these, uh, two-hundred-dollar shoes and things of, of such nature? And I, uh, I'm actually demanding that the Board of Education do some type of, um, investigation in, uh, the school system and in the schools of like potential biases and, uh, opportunities or, excuse me, not opportunities, potential biases or, uh, incidents that these teachers are, are getting into with these students. Um, I also would like to speak upon the situation with the student that held this unsincined event for the seniors of the, um, Waterbury Public School System, or, you know, for Waterbury teens. And I would like the superintendent to come out publicly and, uh, you know, address the situation and give us an explanation as to why that occurred and why it is that her diploma was withheld. I would also like to demand that, uh, the Board of Education very, uh, intensively, excuse me, sorry, very intensively-
Did we lose him?
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. I would like to, uh, to-
Can we move on to the next speaker, please? We must be losing his cell phone.
Okay, that's all the speakers I have, except for the two who did not respond. Um-
Hi, I'm Aitee Hards. Didn't realize that my mute was still on when you called on me.
I'm sorry, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Aitee Hards, twenty-one Buckleham Street, Waterbury, Connecticut. Um, I want to say first of all, thank you all for being here, and thank you for, uh, allowing us to speak and share us on such a very important, um, topic and situation that's dear to all of our hearts. I appreciate your time. Um, as I said before, my name is Aitee Hards. I was born and raised in Waterbury, graduated from Kennedy from the SOAR program. And while I was in high school, I noticed my peers were being, um, very well-prepared for college almost since day one of freshman year. However, when I looked back on my experience, I realized that my classes only started discussing the materials and skills needed to go to college until the end of my junior year. So even in a program that's supposed to help, uh, prepare students for, all students for the future, there is still bias in there. And I ended up, uh, going to a college that I didn't really care for, I couldn't really afford, just to have my funding pulled and being prevented from going back the second year, not for a lack of trying. Um, I bring this up just to point out the fact that the education system in general is flawed. This is a known fact, that this many individuals are at a particular disadvantage compared to others. If you take that into consideration, it sounds very much like the ways in which the police system is flawed. So if we're involving a flawed system in an already, um, flawed system, think about how that's gonna affect certain people. If you were to ask my peers about me, a lot of them would say that I was a model student. Um, I stayed out of trouble, I was never suspended, never got detention, anything like that, and that's extended in adult years. Um, I was one of the protesters that was arrested on May thirty-first while I was complying with police, mind you. And even though several of the people who were arrested have put their health and their bodies and their life on the line to protect both parties at that protest, they were still arrested. And my few encounters of being within law enforcement since then- In my few encounters of being within law enforcement since the protest on the thirty-first, just being in the presence of law enforcement, I experienced a very severe panic attack for the first time in my life and it was terrifying. And due to my experience, I no longer feel as though as long as you are a good person and you do the right thing, police will protect you. Now, imagine a young, questionable mind being exposed to those types of emotions so early in life. Imagine being thirteen years old and feeling that you can't trust the police to protect you even when you're doing the right thing. Kids deserve to feel safe at school. And there are those kids who experience inhumane living conditions at home in which school is the only place where they feel safe. Imagine being that student and having that safe haven taken away or compromised. Kids are seeing brown faces killed every single day in the news and then they're seeing the uniforms that are responsible for taking those lives in their classrooms every day. Yes, there are protocols in place to weed out the bad eggs who are looking to abuse their power as officers. But it's obvious at this point from statistics that these protocols have failed and it's way too easy for those bad tops to slip through the cracks. Increasing the presence of law enforcement in high school increases the likelihood of exposing those bad eggs to children. At this point, I invite you to challenge yourselves to think about what happened to George Floyd and Philando Castile and Ayanna Jones and countless others. And I challenge you to think about how you would feel if that had happened to a student while in school. I challenge you to think about how this community would feel if you were to allow this to have happened in school. I challenge you to think about how that child who trusted you to protect them would feel if you had let that happen when you have the power to prevent it. And I know my time is probably up, but if I did have more time, I would speak on the young woman who's having her diploma refused to her for holding what seems very much to be like her own version of a graduation party. But I know I don't have the time, but I also stand with her on that and I do believe that she has the right to hold her own events and she has the right to her very own high school diploma. Thank you so much for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Carrie, was she the last one?
As far as I have, yes.
Okay. Uh, we are... Hello? Who is calling?
Hello? Hello, this is Mahnu San. I signed up to speak, but I wasn't able to speak earlier.
Oh, okay.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Mahnu San, one forty, uh, M-A-H-N-U-E-S-A-H-N. And my address is one forty-seven Manchester Avenue, Waterbury, Connecticut. Um, I'm just gonna, okay. Uh, all respected members of the Board of Education, uh, like I said, my name is Mahnu San and I am a part of the former students, current students and residents of Waterbury that come here today to voice their outlook on events that have taken place recently. Although I'm not an alumni of the Waterbury Public School System, I would like to voice my thoughts and concerns in this statement. Like many of my fellow peers, I am appalled and disappointed by the egregious events that took place on May thirty-first in downtown Waterbury, the arrests of twenty-eight protesters. Protesters demonstrating in honor of George Floyd and police brutality were unjust. The poor treatment of those that were arrested, even after being detained, were unjust. The fact that this event is a direct mirror of the gruesome imagery that we see on the news and social media platforms today is disappointing for the city of Waterbury, a place meant to be fruitful in its diversity within our communities and a place that champions promoting safety within these communities. Many may believe that this issue is not directly related to the responsibilities of the Board of Education. Hopefully, this statement along with the other statements illustrates why the Board of Education must hear all that we are presenting. The silence that has come from these members of the Board and the like is staggering. The actions of the police officers on May thirty-first has impacted many young people, two of which were minors. A site like this should be concerning for everyone, especially those that sit in on this meeting tonight. Members of the community speaking tonight and I are weary of children in schools that see men and women with badges every day. They are wary of seeing another site such as May thirty-first, but this time on school grounds. They are wary of the negligence and services of the police and wary of the safety of Waterbury Public School children, children around the age of those that were arrested on May thirty-first. Publicly condemning the actions of the police that took place on that day is imperative for those who sit here today and even in every absent executive official that holds the responsibility to cultivate a safe community in Waterbury. This is, however, only one step of the many that are needed to aid in significant change for the betterment of Waterbury. The lack of adequate de-escalation practices by the police is very telling and is no surprise that the presence of police in public schools across Connecticut has a direct correlation to an increase in student arrests. My fellow community members will have elaborated on these statistics and facts. The fact that this is not an immediate concern to the Board of Education demonstrates the prioritization or lack thereof of the safety of their students. The Board of Education is asked by its community to listen intently to the voices of the people that they have heard tonight. I hope that through this ongoing conversation, members of the Board of Education will take this chance to reevaluate their position on issues that pertain to those that have recently taken place. In addition, I hope that this meeting gives the Board of Education all the more reason to take the time to listen and actively seek out to listen to the concerns of the Waterbury community, a diverse community that you took up your positions in order to ensure safe and learning environments for its children. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and I hope that this conversation does not end here. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your thoughtful comments tonight. May I now have a motion to return to normal business?
Motion to return to the regular order of business? Second.
Second. Discussion. Everyone in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We are back to normal business. Item number seven is superintendent's announcements. Dr. Ruffin, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. And, um, I would like to first start off with a sincere congratulations to the class of two thousand and twenty as, uh, we have completed the graduations in a virtual environment, which has been a very challenging year for everyone and certainly not what we expected. But we do hope that all of our graduates were able to celebrate with their families and had an opportunity to meet with Waterbury Public Schools, wishes them the very best as they continue on their journey. I, I felt that I also needed to mention that through other reports that we're getting, either from the governor's office or the commissioner's office, continue to be in line with what we have previously used to make our decisions regarding large crowd gatherings. And, and we have not received anything, and it's recently, it's yesterday and today, that, that changed any of the requirements that would have affected what has happened for Waterbury Public Schools in the month of June. Um, we are very proud that our schools also took an opportunity to recognize and the promotion ceremonies for their eighth graders and fifth graders and kindergarteners. And we're very pleased that so many have shared those wonderful events, you know, on the social media as well as some are displayed on our website. I'd like to wish the students, the teachers, all of our families a very reductive summer or restful one that hopefully allows them to gain some degree of peace, especially since the last three and a half months have been most challenging for everyone. Uh, I want to commend the teachers, the staff and the principals for the job well done in an unprecedented, um, environment. And I'd like to also assure everyone that we will continue to do work this summer as we not only prepare for summer school, but we will be reconvening, uh, many meetings this summer as we explore our options for August of two thousand and nineteen, uh, of two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, I also would like to, um, share that the expectations as we move forward. We have been meeting every week, uh, along with the mayor's committee. We have our own district committee, the long-term recovery committee. Uh, we had another meeting today. And in the next two weeks, Waterbury will be meeting many times with other subcommittee members in an effort to really draw closer to what our two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year will look like. We will be asking for a lot of input from our families, from our students, from our teachers, from our administrators, from our community. Uh, and we will be doing that in various ways to be able to engage in meaningful conversation and dialogue around, uh, about concerns with the new school year and what everyone would expect us to be able to resemble and how we could resume in an environment, whether we are all going to go back into the school buildings or a combination thereof. So, at this point, there has been no decisions made, there have been no recommendations made. But within the next two weeks, we will be working very, very strategically around some presentations and some options that we will consider. Uh, I would certainly hope that the, um, members that, you know, some of our, uh, people that spoke tonight, uh, will also continue to engage with us because we really are sincere about continuing to engage our student voice and our young adult voice as we continue to make recommendations and improvements for our district. Likewise, we'll be utilizing, uh, different tools of engagement as we go out into communities where we will be able to get meaningful alternatives and recommendations for how we can improve not only the school district, but how our school district responds to all of our students. Um, I also, uh, would like to report that we are continuing our, uh, our professional development around race and equity. Uh, we've most recently had some professional development for our central office staff. We will continue that and we will continue for the entire school district as we resume in the fall. Um, it is a deep commitment for us. It is not a short-term commitment and nor do I believe that we can do this in isolation. So, you could expect that there will be various committees. I certainly hope that people will not only volunteer, but they will participate and they will actively participate because I believe together, uh, hearing the voices of the many people that we are responsible for affecting, I would hope that we can come up with a plan that if we ever try to do this alone or in isolation. Um, at this time, uh, I don't have any further updates. And, but I do want to wish everyone a wonderful summer. Just know that, uh, we will be working the entire summer and I am still available for, uh, for communication at any time. And the phone numbers that have traditionally been calling will be answered in person once people return to a more traditional schedule, which they have not been. But we are very pleased that several of our secretaries have been taking calls the entire summer and they have been responding, uh, and, and they have also been communicating some of those messages to either my, my direct staff who has either responded to a parent. Most of the questions were questions that needed to be referred directly to the teacher or directly to the school principal for immediate attention. Uh, but if anyone wants to continue to reach me during the summer, you may certainly do so as I plan on actively working with all of you, uh, our commissioners, as well as our community members and our students and our teachers and administrators for the long-term recovery plan for Waterbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Um, the president's comments are simple. To each and every graduate of two thousand and twenty, congratulations. You've achieved your goal. You're also lived through history. God bless you and good luck. Our next, uh, agenda item is student representative comments, but there is no student representatives tonight. So, we will move on to the consent calendar. I know it's our favorite part of the night. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent calendar tonight? Karen Harvey, I see you waving. I can't hear you.
All right. All right, President, President Gano, can we remove item ten point nine, please?
Okay. Anyone else have a item they want removed from the consent calendar? Oh, hearing none, I will go and, uh, delineate the eight items on the consent calendar for tonight. Item ten point one, Committee on Finance, request approval of a professional services agreement with Access Rehab Centers LLC to provide occupational and physical therapy services. Item ten point two, Committee on Finance, request the approval of a professional services agreement with EBS Healthcare Incorporated, doing business as Educational Based Services, or EBS, to provide speech and language therapy services. Item ten point three, Committee on Finance, request an approval of a professional services agreement with Access Rehab Centers LLC to provide speech and language therapy services. Item ten point four, Committee on Finance, request the approval of a contract with Teaching Strategies LLC to provide preschool curriculum, assessment material and professional learning services. Item ten point five, Committee on Finance, they request the approval of a contract with Houston Mifflin Heart Court Publishing Company for middle school mathematics curriculum. Item ten point six, Committee on Finance, requesting the approval of a contract with College Board for springboard high school language arts curriculum. Item ten point seven, Committee on Finance, request the approval of a contract with College Board for springboard high school mathematics curriculum. Committee on Finance, uh, ten point eight is Committee on Finance, request the approval of transfers in the two thousand and nineteen slash two thousand and twenty fiscal year budget. I need a motion to approve the consent calendar items ten point one through ten point eight as listed and delineated.
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Harvey. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any discussion before we go forward? All in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The motion carries. All the consent calendar is moving forward and approved. The item moved, removed from, uh, the consent calendar is item ten point nine. And I will read it as what...
Okay.
As what it's been delineated to me. Item ten point nine, with the approval of the Committee on Finance, the superintendent of schools recommends approval of the Department of Education's two thousand and twenty slash two thousand and twenty-one operating budget totaling one hundred eighty-five million, four hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars. In parentheses, one hundred fifty-eight million, three hundred seventy-five thousand slash Board of Alderman adopted appropriation, twenty-three thousand, four hundred forty-two, I mean, twenty-three million, four hundred forty-two, seven hundred eighty-two million dollars, alliance year nine, four hundred fifty thousand for two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen surplus, one million for two thousand... What was that?
No, go ahead, President.
Please don't interrupt me. I'm losing my track. Um, one million for the two thousand and fifteen slash sixteen surplus, one million for the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen surplus, six hundred seventy-five thousand for contingency surplus and five hundred thousand for the city non-lapsing contingency, um, amount. Um, any discussion?
Discussion. We need the motion.
Do we have a motion on this, please?
Yes. Motion to approve.
May we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. President Gano?
Yeah, go for it.
All right. Um, I have to, I regret having to do this, but I have to pull this item and vote against it, uh, due to the fact that it involves, uh, the elimination of a teacher, uh, a teacher's position at Wall School. And Wall School has always been, um, first of all, I graduated from Wall School. I, if, if I vote to eliminate this position, I have to explain to the community why I voted for this. So, I am going to vote against this. So I am going to vote against this uh because of the elimination of that position. My question would be uh why a li- why was position left vacant? And why was it not filled? And I haven't received an answer on that. So uh I want to thank Doreen for doing the investigation and um but I will not be voting for this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your comments. Any other discussion points? Nobody's waving their hands, so I think we can move on to vote. And Carrie, do you want to do a roll call?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
No.
Commissioner Hernandez, did she join? No. Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
He's muted. It looked like it was a yes.
I hear a dog panting. Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
That's not me panting, but I do vote yes.
Uh, Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
Yes.
Eight, one, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Our next item is the Committee on Curriculum and Commissioner Tom Van Stone, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The uh with the approval of the Committee on Curriculum, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the approval of the new grade K through five mathematic curriculum and the textbooks and resources for the same. And that comes from Ready Classroom's Mathematics.
Second.
Do we have a a discussion? All in favor then, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Next item, Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you, sir. Uh, through you, Mr. President. With the approval of Committee on Curriculum, Superintendent of Schools recommends the new grade six through eight mathematics curriculum, textbooks, resources, uh, and that comes from H and H, uh, Intro to Math Programs.
Thank you, Larry. I have a motion, please.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none.
I will uh give a little discussion, Mr. President, if I may. Um, uh, because these were uh, they they did go through committee, but the presentation by the staff was so well done. Uh, I have requested that we just put it on the workshop, just so the rest of the board may see uh how well this uh curriculum is going to work for us in mathematics. Uh, that's my only comment.
Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Our next agenda item is the Committee on Building and School Facilities with the other side of the Van Stone family, Commissioner Jason Van Stone, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee of the uh Building and School Facilities recommends that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the use of school facilities at no charge for the following school organizations, indoor city departments. Uh, first, the Park Department, uh, to use Crosby, Wallace, Willby, and North End classrooms, caf, pool, gym, theater arts rooms for their summer camp running June 29, 2020 through August 7, 2020. Uh, staff would report Monday through Friday, 7:45 to 4:00 p.m. The camp would run Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Additionally, the Park Department require uh requests the use of the Kennedy Pool for June 24 and 25, 2020, 9:00 a.m. to noon, and June 27th, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 for lifeguard training, respectfully submitted and so moved.
May I have a um a a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Actually, Mr. President?
Say again?
Discussion.
I didn't hear that. One at a time, please. Discussion.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, you please.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I uh regret not being able to speak on this. Last time I was a little tardy to the meeting, but I did watch it on TV and I understand what we're trying to do here. Um, I still am reticent. Um, you know, we haven't had our school children in there since March, um, even just as of 15 minutes ago, the superintendent was very honest with us, saying we still really don't know what we're doing for August. So I would be reticent to allow anything to happen inside our schools that even any small way could lead to a a delay in in kind of getting back to operations is normal. So I understand the the need for it and why it's being requested. I think I'll be voting no against this tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I uh brought up my concerns in the workshop, uh, my concerns have not gone away. Uh, we are closing down our buildings for everything. Do we need our our kids to find a place to go this summer? Yeah, we do, but I'm not sure, um, as a municipality, we're the ones that should offer that. Um, there are other people that have requested summer use of the buildings and we're basically telling them it's not going to happen. Um, so there is no way I will support uh use of our buildings this quickly during this pandemic. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Tom Van Stone. Commissioner Liz Brown, please.
Yes, I really appreciated the concerns of Commissioner Van Stone and I took it upon myself, I had extensive conversations with Victor Cuevas, who is the head of the Park and Rec Department. I had, I read all the comments, uh, responses to the questions of Commissioner Van Stone. And I really feel that everybody has done their due diligence. I will be voting for this. I feel that um uh given the information, uh, and over 100 students have uh registered to attend our summer camp, uh, we have many uh college students, many students who are going to be uh working at these camps. Uh, so I think they they deserve an opportunity. I think we're all interested in the safety of the students, uh, but there's many camps throughout the state of Connecticut that are opening and uh under these circumstances. So I I have confidence, uh, and the parents uh have confidence and are registering their children. And uh, my understanding from Mr. Clark is that if other organizations want to use the school facilities and can, you know, uh, meet all the requirements, the health and safety, safety requirements, that they would be able to. So at this point, it doesn't seem that uh other organizations uh are able to meet those requirements, which are pretty stringent. So I I would hate to see us uh deny access uh to our school buildings, which are city municipal buildings, community buildings, they're just not Board of Ed buildings. So I I I I would urge my board members to vote in support of this.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Melissa Serrano Adorno?
Thank you, President. Um, I know I have been back and forth. I understand um both Van Stone's point of view. Uh, as a parent myself, I personally would not have um signed up my own child, only because I'm just that helicopter mom that's always being extra protective, but I'm even more cautious now that um actually one of my children actually had the COVID, so um but also I I feel that, you know, the Park Rec, you know, Recs uh Center and 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 I know Victor Cuevas, I I'm sure that they did follow protocol and that they got the approval from the Health Department and the state, whatever they needed to do to to be able to open up. So with that said, it's the parents that are making the decision and allowing um the students to participate in it. So I would hate to take away um something that the students might be looking forward to, especially being under quarantine. Um, I think they they urge the um the desire to to socialize. Um, I know a lot of them have been going through a lot of anxiety and depression, so I think it's like a slow transition to kind of get back to the norm. Um, so I I would be supporting this because at the end of the day, it is the parents making the decision on whether or not they want to allow their children to participate in this camp. And I'm afraid that if we don't allow them to use our facility, then what would the children be doing? They'll they'll still be quarantined, doing what? Um, so uh I do, uh, like Liz says, I I do have confidence that um Victor Cuevas or the Parks and Rec Center um did what they're supposed to. I know we are not liable for anything. Um, so I I will be approving for this, but I do understand the concerns that um both Van Stones have respectfully. I I I totally understand that. Um, but yeah, I I just kind of wanted to let you guys know it's more of the parents making that decision and allowing their students. If they didn't have students signed up, then that would be another thing, but um as long as they're following every protocol, safety precaution, and that the parents are aware of that, then then I'm okay with that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
You got it.
Is there anyone else who wants to uh make a statement? Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Um, and I just received a text from a parent that said if the school is open for camp, uh, kids should be allowed to hold summer school and to attend summer school. Um, so I will be voting. I understand uh the concerns of the uh of of uh the commissioners, but I think, you know, the the long and short of it is uh we want the kids off streets, uh, let's let them uh participate in summer school, so I will be voting for this. Thank you, Mr. President Pagano.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Discussion points? No one's, nobody else got one?
No.
All right, thank you. Uh, Carrie, can we get a roll call vote on this, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
It looked like a yes. He's muted.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
I'm watching you, Charles.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
No.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
No.
President Pagano?
Yes.
Seven, two, motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone. Our next item is the Superintendent's notification to the board. May I get a motion to receive a place on file, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Okay.
May I have it all in a discussion? May I have it all in favors and say aye?
Aye.
Closed, abstaining? The motion carries. Let me funnel through this remnant of the tree here, so I know we're on that. Item number 15, unfinished business of preceding meeting only. Anything there, anyone? Hearing none, I'll move on to item 16, other unfinished, new miscellaneous, or unforgasted issues. Anyone?
President Pagano?
Hold on. Hold on, Rocco, Orso, you're first.
Yes, I just want to make a statement too. Uh, getting back to 14.6, uh, the retirements, I just want to firstly thank all these members for all the good service they've done throughout the years and I'd like to thank them very much.
I share your sentiments also, so thank you, Commissioner Orso. Uh, Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, President Pagano, I know you have a heartbreak at eight. Um, uh, the, most of the people that spoke addressed uh some of the issues I want to address, so that kind of eliminates some of the lists that I want to go through for a later date, but I just want to take the opportunity, one, again, to congratulate our class of 2020. Um, I think they are fantastic. Uh, second, I want to thank our community agencies and community groups for allow, getting us through this uh summer or the March, April, and May with uh the the offerings that they had with webinars, uh, particularly with Urban Trauma, and I would hope that the uh that we will uh take advantage of of those classes because it is very, very uh, they were very, very good and um I just hope we'll do that. I want to also thank you, lastly, President Pagano and the uh Superintendent for the letter that you wrote in regards to the uh inequities and the racial uh issues that are going on. I will have more to talk about this, uh, to say about this, but I just wanted to thank you guys for doing that. Thank you, President Pagano.
Your point welcome, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Jason Van Stone and the family.
Thank you very much. Uh, kind of tagging on what Rocco had said, um, in in item 14 today, we do have a couple of, um, or more than a couple, actually, uh, requirements of some longtime folks who have given decades of service to the people of Waterbury, the students of Waterbury, to this board. Um, and uh, you know, that's not the end of this. Uh, we're going to have some more coming up in the next few weeks, but I just wanted to take the moment to recognize the great work, um, you know, specifically of Mrs. Merrill, who is the countless times when, uh, you know, a member of the public has come and had a question and um it seems like every superintendent we've had under my, under my time here said, well, let's call Ms. Merrill and see what we should do about it. So uh, she she was a tremendous uh asset, uh, as was Mrs. Burns, Dr. Frajo, uh, in Dante D'Amio, um, you know, so I just wanted to point that, to point that out tonight.
Thank you very much for your comments. Commissioner Brown?
Yes, uh, yes, congratulations to all the graduates and I just want to congratulate uh Superintendent and everybody who made those wonderful graduation ceremonies, so meaningful, the student uh speeches and and just, it really went very well considering uh we made the best out of a situation, so thank you very much for for putting that together. It was very, very well done. I want to really say, I want to thank all the speakers tonight who called in. I have been just appalled myself personally and in reaching out to a lot of people after I saw the video of the May 31 protest. And I want to assure the people who called in that, you know, I personally, and I know many of the board members, we will be looking at all aspects of our school district to make sure that our students feel safe, that they feel loved, and that they don't have to be afraid uh of going to school. And I think we're going through a strategic planning process. We will be meeting uh next week on the 24th and these are, every, all these issues should be on the table. This is a new day. We have to really listen to the community and make sure that every action, every action that we take really will, is the, is for the benefit of the children. And uh, I, if you didn't see this video, I encourage you to see it and 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 I think we have a lot of soul searching to do and we have, we've got to connect with our students and make them uh a priority. So I really appreciate all the comments and I know that I am doing a lot of reflection, a lot of praying and uh about a lot of things and I and I and I know the board members share our concern and sorrow for what's going on in Waterbury and in the world. And uh, I just know that we're going to be looking at everything. I know I'm going to be encouraging everybody, everything's on the table, no business as usual. So thank you very much for calling in and God bless.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Anyone else? Uh, Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
President, um, again, I just do want to congratulate the class of uh 2020. Uh, you guys are going to be forever known to be that special group of students who had to face this uh big challenge and hopefully, uh, I pray that it doesn't happen again. Um, but hopefully these unique circumstances will only give you guys um resilience and inspire you to to make the world a better place, especially when you get right back at it. Um, I do want to thank the callers. We always encourage the public, um, especially our students or even former students, uh, just the community members. Um, you guys are stakeholders too, so we appreciate those phone calls and that input. We're definitely going to continue that communication. Um, but I do also want to thank all the administrators, all the staff, everybody that, you know, was working diligently and and helping out these students with these distant online learning, um, as well, and especially to the parents, to the guardians, grandparents, to all the relatives that were really helping um our our children in our district um to get through it. Um, we wouldn't be able to do it without you. We're a team and just know that, you know, you guys are not alone. This is something that was new to all of us, so um we hope that you're just a little patient with us as we're, you know, really trying to do the best that that we can to ensure that every um every student every, every student has a great education and a great experience. So I know a lot of people are bummed about the whole graduations, and, you know, maybe in the future, there's, there's another option, but like I said, I pray that this doesn't happen again. I support the superintendent for her decision when it comes to the safety of each of your children. So I hope that you guys can understand that, and we are really following protocols the best that we can, you know, as, as the state recommends to us. So congratulations again to the class of 2020. We're here to help each and every, you know, one of our families and our students. So I appreciate the involvement that, that you guys were able to participate in tonight's conversation, that we hope that you guys continue to do so in many more meetings. So thank you, guys, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Everyone, I'm going to give you a gift. We don't have executive session tonight. So I would love a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
To adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, everyone. Happy summer.
Have a good one, guys. Talk to you next week.
Happy Father's Day.
24th.
Happy Father's Day.
Bye-bye.